So, good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Wednesday, June 20th, 2018. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on our agenda is the interview of candidates for the school board member vacancy. I've scheduled the candidates to come in alphabetical order because it seemed as structured as anything. So we'll first invite to the table Jason Brodsky. And as he's coming up, I'll go over the interview process. So, we're going to start tonight by allowing you to introduce yourself, give an overview of your background. We're going to ask a question and move to the person to the left, starting from the end of the table, moving toward the chair's position. We will keep going around the table until we have no further questions. When we've completed our questions, we'll allow the candidate to ask questions of the board and the administration, which is why we brought them here, so you could get some clarifying questions there. And then I will allow you the time to add any information you wish regarding the interest in the position and why you find yourself to be the best candidate. So afterward, we'll go over the selection process. But first, we will welcome you, Jason Brodsky. And I will allow you first to give yourself a little introduction.
Sure. It should be close enough. So hello, my name's Jason Brodsky. I've been in Merrimack for about six and a half years now. Came from Long Island, growing up, and moved here for a job at BAE Systems, where I've been for the past eight years. Big fan of Merrimack. My wife and I have two kids in the school district. One actually just went through the fourth grade celebration, move-up celebration today, which was a lot of fun. The other one's entering third grade, so we're going to be here for a little while as we go through the school system. And I've been following the school board and all the other town communities since I moved in here, and always been somebody who wanted to get involved. I've been on the MYA community for a long time, coaching soccer since I got here. My wife is on the path, and I get volunteered for most things, but I do it willingly and have a lot of fun. Done all the color runs we've done, have a lot of fun getting involved in the community. At my job, I'm a program manager by trade, so I am very familiar with managing costs, schedule, budgets, things like that, and negotiating between parties with strong opinions is something that is just par for the course in my job, not an unusual activity. And so I felt that I could bring something to the school board by helping out wherever you guys need me to help out.
Thank you. So with that, we'll start with Naomi. If you'd like to ask a question, Jason, we'll move around the table.
Hi, Jason. I just wanted to follow up from your overview, your introduction. One of the things you just said was that you've been following the school board since you've been here. Could you tell me a little bit about that and what items have been of most interest to you?
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of the normal, high-interest items with kindergarten and water filtration, and even some of the things like the last meeting with the math program. My daughter was one of the experimental math programs in first grade, where she was coming home with a different style of math every month. So listening on how you make those decisions and how you follow through with those, you know, trying to track the kids through high school and measuring the statistics and combining that with the state requirements has always been fascinating to me. Being able to weigh in on those things more than just, you know, showing up to ask a question or two is something that I would really enjoy.
Andy?
So we broke protocol already. You just traded your draft pick over to her.
She yielded her first question.
Okay. I'm not going to talk about identity management or compliance, because that was work five minutes ago. So because you follow the school board and things like that, what do you think is the most important issue that's facing the school district, based on what you've heard so far?
Yeah, so obviously, there's some upcoming changes to the town with all the influx of people, potentially, obviously, if they all fill the condos. That's not a given, but there's an expected influx of population. We have our water problem, so there's always the health thing. But I think the most important thing for the school district is to maintain the, I don't want to just say small class size, but maintain the small community aspect that Merrimack had for a long time, as we grow towards potentially becoming a small city versus just a conglomeration of villages into a town. I think we need to maintain that identity so that our students, as they go up through high school and into college, have something to maintain and not just become one of the many in the pool.
My first question is, what do you feel is the school board's goal, to deliver a public education?
What is the goal?
What do you feel the school board's goal should be, to deliver a public education?
I think the school board should be focused on ensuring that students of all backgrounds can leave the education system on as close to an equal footing as possible, understanding that not everybody can realize the same output, but that they all have the same opportunity to realize that output.
Back to the beginning of the row, so I think Naomi's taking her turn this time.
Now that I let other people do the hard first questions. Following up just a little bit, what do you think are the greatest challenges facing public education in general at the moment?
I think there's been some interesting things out in the world with how standardized testing and, just in general, comparison testing, if you will, has been progressing. There's a lot of colleges now that are not accepting SAT scores, they're not using that as a metric, right? There's a lot of whether you can pay for performance on those for the people who are fortunate to do Kaplan courses or things like that at that level, but all the way down to even the conversations that went on with the full-day kindergarten and where people have the opportunity to put their children in the extra half-day or not. And I think that was a good decision that the town made, majority vote wins, and I think the town spoke on that pretty clearly, so that was good. So I think that understanding how we can measure performance correctly to ensure that we're reacting to it correctly, right? So in my job, we have leading indicators for schedule and costs, so you don't realize you spent your budget when you're already negative. You've got to know ahead of time that you're trending that way, and I think education's the same thing. You have to know that your children are learning at the right rate early enough that if they're not, you can correct. So I think one of the biggest challenges is measuring performance accurately.
Cindy?
So based on what you know about the school board and the responsibilities, what do you think you might find to be the most challenging?
I think what I would say probably is the most challenging is balancing budgets with the needs of, whether it's salaries or facilities, or just what the town people are asking for. I'm sure there's a lot of things you'd like to give people just because they ask that you can't afford to do in the budget. So I think the biggest challenge would be to help fit everything in within the current budget. But there are obviously many things that go into running the school that can be challenging on their own, but I think at the end of the day, it comes down to, do you have the funding necessary to get done what you have to get done?
Andy?
People are hitting my question, so that's cool. Okay, you're good. Anybody who's been involved with watching the school board is know that I have, one of the things that I'm focused on now, and my question is, are you familiar at all with the situation around the SAU sped building that we're facing with, and do you have any invisions or any ideas in terms of the path that we're taking towards resolving that problem?
Sure. So I actually just yesterday read through the report that was posted from the engineering analysis. There's a riveting 20 pages of pictures. But there was some interesting things in there that I think we need to understand, or you, I should say, shouldn't get presumptive, need to understand the...
We as a town...
That's right. We as a town, right, need to first understand, you know, what the path would be on the facility that we just purchased. I understand the need for a combined or just newer facilities than the rental facilities that we have, whether the facility that we just purchased, per that report, can be refurbished in a decent time period and at a decent cost that makes sense versus, you know, upgrading rentals, or, right, there's a bunch of different possibilities there, but I think there's a way to make it work. I just don't know all the details of all the possibilities yet.
Follow-on?
Sure. Clarifiers are totally allowed.
So the question is, and I actually was going to do a follow-on to the budget, because one of the things that when you're on the school board, you get hit with the naysayers or the "I don't want to spend an extra nickel on anything to do, we're already spending too much." What do you think that the towns, I'm struggling for the word here, how do you think the town will react to the proposal to do this sort of building? And if negative, how do you think you would convince them that it's the right thing to do? I know this is a hard question, but...
No, no, no. First, I need to convince myself, because I would never try and convince somebody of something I don't believe. But I think the thing to tread carefully on is that we just, the town just agreed to purchase the building with that use in mind, and I think there would be some negative reaction to an immediate follow-up bill, most likely multiple times what the purchase price was. You might get the reaction of, well, didn't we just pay for the building, kind of comments. So I think the approach that I would think of at the moment would be to roll it into the capital plan, so that it's a funded activity over a longer period of time versus trying to steamroll it in quickly, less impact to the tax budget coming up quickly, and give people a chance to see it over several, you know, voting cycles of what's coming up, you know, in 2020 or 2021. But I know that we also have a potential time crunch of not wanting to stay in the facilities that we're in. So there's, may need to look at a phased approach of maybe renting an upgrade short-term while we do the capital plan, because the building's not going to get fixed overnight. So that's my off-the-cuff answer.
Covered? Okay. My question is, what would you do if a constituent or parent came to you with a concern about school district issues?
Sure. First is, I would share it with the board. It's not a single-person response. I know that the initial reaction is to usually try and reassure people, but sometimes they are valid concerns that need to be handled discreetly, potentially, depending on what the concern is. I've certainly had experience with that in my job, where people raise things that you need to consider. Every concern is valid, but I would raise it to a group conversation before I went back to somebody. I would, of course, tell them, I'm going to look into it, but I can't respond immediately.
Okay. Naomi, you're good?
I'm all set.
Okay. Cindy?
One of the things that often the public isn't always aware of, or keenly aware of, is the amount of committee time that we have on other committees related to our school board responsibilities. For example, I think we're on, each of us are on maybe four...
Four to five.
Five extra assignments. So it could be negotiating a contract could be one, or helping out with our safeguard, which is the community group for positive choices, for example, that's one of mine, or curriculum committee, or a...
School by stop committee.
Professional development. Would you have the ability, if you were on the school board, to be able to take those extra assignments, as well as, in some of those assignments, they do meet during working hours? So just to be transparent about what the responsibilities entail, I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah. Obviously, there's unknowns that come up in schedules, but I would certainly make an effort to accommodate midday work if possible.
Okay. Andy?
So I have two questions I want to ask. I'll ask the first one, the one that's more fun. Your parent, what are your thoughts about the school calendar and areas that maybe we should, I mean, we've talked about it at the table, the school board. A lot of people are yelling because you're going out too late. What about blizzard bags? What about hours? What about days? What are your thoughts on the whole calendars? Because it is, we'll tell you that as a school board member, it is the number-one thing that we get pinged on by parents when the sketch, when it starts too late or too early in the fall, too late or too early in the spring, and then when it comes out to the post-it in the new calendar, so.
Yeah, so there's obviously many answers to that. I think the first is that I've always just managed my schedule to the school calendars. Whatever it is, is what it is, because you've got to put your kid in school. I think all of those concerns, you know, the blizzard bag one in particular, or just how to handle snow days in general, whether it's online, whether it's blizzard bag, you know, offline, whatever it is, are all valid things to think about, especially in a town that gets a lot of snow and typically has a few snow days. With those higher technology things, obviously comes cost, that people don't necessarily think through, both in, you know, if we had to send home iPads with people, or if teachers have to be available extra time, you know, later at night, online to certify the blizzard bag time. But the start and end date, I think there's always a pro and con to it. I think the thing that I would look into more personally, just my own vision on it, is how we track education time, right? There's schools that do hours versus days versus units versus all the other ways you can, you can track it, to make sure that we're actually doing what's best for the kids, and not just, like I was saying, with the, how do you measure performance, right? Making sure we're not just executing to a number, but executing to an educational reason that makes sense for the families in the community.
Okay. Was that the more fun or the less fun question?
It was the more fun.
Okay, excellent. Good times.
Well, it's less fun.
Okay. Well, we'll find out soon, now won't we?
Okay.
Let's see, on his next turn. So what would you like to see changed in our school district?
It's tricky. There's a lot of things I think that people always say, you know, more transparency, you know, lower taxes, yada, yada, yada. But I think that what I would personally, you know, want to push for, and I'll just keep going back to it, is more transparency in the metrics, to really push, how are we measuring, what are we measuring, and why are we measuring it, so that people understand? Because I think between some of the homework changes and some of the standardized tests that aren't made that clear to the families all the time, right? Kids just go to school and they come back, "I took a test today."
Okay.
Right? And what was it for? What's the result? How does it impact the child over their educational career? Right? You've got some of the advanced learning tests that put them into different tracks, and maybe some more advanced notice to parents if they want to try and, you know, help tutor their kids or work with their kids to excel in those certain tests. So I'm just going to keep going back to the metrics and making sure that those are publicized and well-understood.
Okay.
Okay. What's one thought that you might have on improving the communication within the district?
Yes, we actually had some interesting conversation about that during the last election, when we were meeting at the coffee location, about how, when you're on a board, right, every communication can be considered public domain, and how do you handle social media, right? And there's some very interesting legal ramifications. And I think we should, we as a community should understand and consult with legal counsel to make sure we get that, so that we can use what we can use and not just avoid all social media to be safe, which is a valid course of action, but I think we should understand how to do it correctly. There's a lot of internet forums, there's a lot of social media things that I think the board could engage in correctly, in order to reach out to the community more broadly than the normal methods.
Okay. Here's your last fun question. Go ahead.
This is, I was putting a list of questions for everybody to respond to today. And the last one that I had was kind of weird, but it's something that I play with all the time in my head, and I'll read it exactly the way I wrote it. What is your view of the relationship between the school board and the town council today, and what changes would you like to see?
As a member of the Merrimack community, I think that not only the town and the school board, but I think the, if you include the MVD in that, there are, I'll call them barriers that I don't fully understand. They seem to operate very independently in a town that's otherwise seems pretty tight and collaborative. So I would certainly like to understand that, because there may be valid reasons for it, you know, similar to the legal things for social media, but it does appear that we could use better communication. For example, some of the water things with the filtration, right, where you got the town looking at, talking to the state, and you got the MVD talking to St. Cobain, and you got the school filtering their own water, and you go, well, maybe there was one larger solution that could have used everybody's efforts together, for whatever reason, didn't happen. So I just, I want to make sure that we're all using, because the resources of all three are all from the same households, the members of the Merrimack community, so I think we owe it to them to make sure that we're using their resources, in this case, literally their dollars and cents, efficiently. So if there's efforts going on across any of the two or three that could be synergized or reduced in scope to share effort, I think we owe it to the community to look into that.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just pick around every now and then.
Understandable.
Some of this is governed by rules that are outside of this conversation, but putting that aside, could you talk a little bit about your sense of the relationship between the school board and administration for the district?
I have always seemed that the school board and the administration works very closely together. I don't think there's been at least public animosity or anything that seems negative there, so I would certainly aim to continue that as best as possible. I think a properly working school board should be in close collaboration with the administration, because school board can make decrees, but the administration's the one who has to execute them, right? If you think judicial, you know, executive branch kind of thoughts. So I think if you've got one hand pointing and the other hand waving, it doesn't make any sense, so I think close ties are important.
I am as well, because you hit on some of the things I had for my last question, so I'm going to skip it. So on that note, it's your turn. If you have any questions of the board or administration, you have the opportunity to do so now.
Yeah, I just actually, following on Cindy's comments with the committees, I remember there was a meeting a little while back where you guys were going over all the committees. Would the new position just assume the prior members' positions, or would there be a chance to discuss what committees are being held by who?
To start, the way we would have, the way we assigned it, obviously, we were all in place at the time of committee assignments. So if things aren't working, then we can absolutely, if you have a conflict that you know you can never make a Thursday during school appointment, something like that, then we would always look to say, you know, who can cover this committee assignment, and what would you like to give me in return? And we always do that, I call it the waitress covering the shift thing, because, you know, we can absolutely switch shifts if that makes sense. What we try to do as a board, whenever appropriate and possible, is to keep continuity for the boards that we serve, so that way we can keep an active participation and minimize the ramp up and really be able to contribute. But where it doesn't make sense, we want to make sure there is a board presence, there is board response and feedback to the board by having that participation happen. So that's most important to us, that those committee assignments do get fulfilled. So if we have to make adjustments, we do, and we have from time to time. So based on what Mike Thompson had, that would be defaulted, and then we'd look at the schedule and say, based on what's been defaulted, what can, you know, what can you make, what can't you make, you know, for whatever reasons? And then we'll just go one-off and say, who can cover? You know, I'm going to Parks and Rec from here after this, by the way, as if there's still time in the meeting. So again, going back over and say, I can't cover Parks and Rec, because it's always Wednesday nights, and I can't normally do Wednesday nights. So we just work it out. So we probably wouldn't take it down and restructure it.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I just, in general, for any of the administration, I'm just curious what you would look for in a board member to help you further, you know, your goals as an administration?
So I appreciated the fact that you said a close working relationship is terribly important. So I really appreciate board members telling me what's important to them, so that information can be gathered about the topics that are important, and we can place those on the agenda. So I work collaboratively with the chair and the vice chair in putting together the agenda, so it includes items that we need to cover, and it also includes topics that are very important to the board. So I like to think that we operate based on the board's behest, and likewise, because of where we travel and what we're up against, we'll say these things need to be covered, because we deal a lot of times with the New Hampshire Department of Ed, and the commissioner has particular things that need to be covered. So it's kind of like going in two directions. We also have a logic model that we use. Some people use strategic planning. We have a logic model that guides in big ideas what we're about, and so it's making sure that those are fulfilled, and again, keeping board members informed and having board members say back, you know, if they think we're on track or not. So there is just a lot of dialogue that goes back and forth, and so I was appreciative of the fact that you perceive that we have a close working relationship, because I would say we do.
I agree.
Either of you?
I would reiterate what was stated. And any board member who comes onto this board will start to develop an appreciation for the level of detail that this board gets into, and the level of rigor that we have when we go through something. And it does appear that perhaps more transparency could be done, perhaps we could get the message out better. However, once you get close to this situation, you realize that there is a lot of work, there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of teamwork, because basically we're a team. They give us our marching orders, we go ahead, we try and put it together the best we can, and we try and give the board, who represents the community, what they're looking for, in the best fashion we know how. And we have discussions sometimes on, well, let's make some mid-course adjustments. So it's a very good relationship, and we look to keep that up. So what you said is, you know, I agree with, definitely.
Appreciate it.
Excellent. Still your floor.
I don't think I have that many more questions. I would just reiterate that I'm very much passionate about the community and look forward to helping in any way I can.
Excellent.
I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. And right at 7:30, wow, we're totally on time.
So Matt, I want to know why you looked at me when you said Ms. Court's correction. I just want to understand.
Because you're going to start talking about identity and so, and so we are on to our next applicant, and that we will invite to the table Nicole Laporte. So welcome, and thank you for applying.
Oh, it wasn't on.
There you go. It's very deceiving.
It is deceiving. Is that better? Okay.
So welcome. So the first thing we'll allow you to do is introduce yourself and give an overview of your background.
Great. So I'm Nicole Laporte. I grew up in Londonderry, been in New Hampshire my whole life, so I really haven't strayed too far, I guess, from the nest. I've been in Merrimack for just over five years, so still fairly new. I went to UNH and got my master's degree in finance and accounting, so I've been heavily focused in that arena ever since. Did spend six years auditing for Baker Newman noise, strong concentration within healthcare, nonprofits, HUDs, you know, that type of arena, highly regulated arena. And then I took a leap of faith and transitioned into banking, had zero background in that, and started as a controller, and now I'm up to a corporate controller for New Hampshire Mutual Bank Corp., which has soon-to-be three bank subsidiaries and a wealth management company. So heavily in finance, heavily in management and supervisory roles, so. Yeah, in terms of interacting within the community, this is somewhat, it's fairly new for me. I'm looking to get myself involved. I do have four kids, two daughters, two stepsons, three of which are in the public school system, ranging from going into first grade, middle school, and high school, and then I have a four-year-old who's going into pre-K, so soon to be in the full-day kindergarten program. So as of fall of 2019, I'm going to have four kids in the public school. So that's kind of what brought me to wanting to apply here. It was more of, you know, I want to get involved, I want to be more ingrained in the community, bring hopefully some of my skill sets and my background to the forefront and be an assistant there. I am a CPA, so I've been of service in various degrees outside of just even banking. And I'm passionate in the sense that my kids are going to be heavily involved in all of the different schools. So if I'm going to invest myself into something, I obviously want it to be, you know, close to home.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that, and we will go around the table as we have before. So we'll start with Naomi, and see if she yields or not.
We'll yield, thank you.
There you go.
I liked that first question.
There you go. And Cindy, the floor is yours.
So you had said you're passionate and you're interested, your kids are going to be heavily involved in all of the schools. In serving in the community, I mean, in serving on the school board, where do you think that you will be able to provide the greatest asset?
I'm kind of hoping...
The greatest support, I guess, is a better way of saying it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not as well-versed in the community as Jason is, so I'll definitely, I'm very transparent in that regard of what I can and can't do. But I'm hoping that I can bring maybe a different perspective. I found that to be a huge asset when I did jump into banking, because sometimes it's nice to have someone to mold and someone to bring a different perspective to the table. nice to have someone to mold and someone to bring a different perspective to the table. I do think that, you know, I'm highly analytical, I'm quick to learn, and, you know, obviously I did some due diligence, I read the board minutes, and, you know, I tried to get myself to be a more qualified candidate. But I do think that my biggest contribution would hopefully be my desire to make, you know, a positive impact, bring my skill sets, and maybe just a different perspective.
Andy?
So in what you've seen in terms of watching the school board, having kids in school, what do you think that the most important issue that's going to be facing the school district is, given where we are today?
I think it's representative, more than just our specific school district, but even within the state or country, is the fact that our resources are being pulled in a lot of different directions, not just financial, but even our people resources. You know, back in the day, it used to be just to focus on making sure we had the best curriculum and that we had the best scores, so that we were ranked as a high-ranked, you know, highly qualified school and, you know, would bring, you know, people into our town. But now it's focused on mental health, it's still having a good quality education, having the other resources available to a wide demographic. All of a sudden, we're faced with more than just having the best test scores and the best curriculums. It's the mental health issues, the stuff we see all over the media. All of a sudden, that's become a more important part of the conference, not necessarily more important, but a central focus on the conversation. It's, you know, our parents are concerned that, you know, you hear of negativity in the media all day long, and all of a sudden, that, I think, maybe comes to the forefront. So I definitely feel that would be a hurdle.
And my question is, what do you feel is a school board's goal to deliver a public education?
Similar to Jason, I do think it's the measurement, you know, making sure that we're not just sticking to an old status quo, but that we're keeping current. I do think that, again, it's meeting the very needs of our students. It's not, you know, generic across the board, it's very much offering a varied gamut of resources, and using the funding as wisely as possible, because obviously there's technology, there's mental illness, there's all the different components that now schools are responsible for providing to these kids, whereas historically, some of these things may have been provided at home.
Okay. And it's down to the end, see what she does with it. She's taking it.
Question. You mentioned work with nonprofits.
Yes.
And I was curious if you could draw some parallels between the things that you saw there and the complexities and the challenges and those that you think might face the school district?
I'm going to go right back to those resources. Nonprofits not only don't have the funding, a lot of times they don't have the people to make their mission happen. Within the school district, I mean, Merrimack's fortunate, we tend to be a more wealthy community overall. So I do think we have a little bit more for resources there than perhaps some other communities, but you're still faced with the same thing. The town wants certain things, regulation requires certain things, there's just certain expectations, and it's having the right people, the right amount of people, and the right amount of money to make it happen.
Cindy?
As you think about, if you were to become a school board member, what do you think that you might personally find to be the most challenging part of the role?
To be completely honest, I think the most challenging part of the role is going to be, you know, trying to capture all the moving parts that perhaps I'm not as familiar with. You know, I've definitely been involved within the school system, obviously through my kids. Definitely tried to keep my finger on the pulse in terms of what's been going on with the board and other town committees, but I think, I think my concern, if I'm being completely honest, would be that I maybe don't know enough, if I'm being completely honest.
Andy?
So I'm going to tap on your financial background here.
Absolutely.
So one of the things we hear about as school board members all the time is that we take the biggest chunk out of everybody's pocket is when they're a taxpayer. You heard when we talked to Jason about all the different dimensions of what makes up a budget. How would you approach the whole budget process that we do? What sort of things would you look for? Do you have any ideas coming in as to what your thoughts are of our budget and how we go about the process and things that you might look for if you got involved in the budget process?
I think I definitely would approach it with, how can we, you know, is there a way to get more bang for our buck? I mean, there's always that look to either vendors being used, is there a way to consolidate that? It's kind of the, you know, getting the two birds with one stone approach, because oftentimes with a budget, you tend to roll forward, it's not the zero base necessarily, it's kind of a roll forward, and that isn't always bad, because you have your benchmark, but sometimes it's also nice to kind of say, can we consolidate something so that maybe we can get more out of that resource without having to pay more for it? I feel like kind of cleaning house once in a while like that is a good thing. I see it, you know, the same thing all the time at work is the, you know, running five different entities, it's the, why do we have five vendors doing something similar when they, you know, this one offers all of it, and we can negotiate a price that's kind of at a higher level? So I think step one for me would just revisit, you know, what we have out there.
Okay. So what would you do if a constituent or parent came to you with a concern?
I definitely would agree, being a little green, definitely, I would want to bring it to the table before I would offer, you know, any answer off the cuff. Most definitely wouldn't feel comfortable with that, so I would definitely bring it to the table, even if I felt that I kind of had an answer in my back pocket.
Thank you for that. We're waving, and we're back to Cindy.
See, you're trying.
It's interesting for me, I'm trying to run a smooth meeting.
So my question again is similar to what I had asked Jason, which was just, A, part of it was just being transparent about the role, which is that there's the extra committees that we all serve on. So I would ask you the same question. Would you have the ability to serve if you were on every once in a while? It doesn't happen that often, at least in my experience, even in the more daytime, the more, there's a couple of committees that generally meet during the day, because that's when we can get the staff. So there's a couple of committees that do that, but would you have the ability to do that occasionally, or?
Yeah, generally speaking, I would have flexibility. I do have the ability to work from home, so even if it was a midday meeting, I'd be able to start and finish my day at home.
Thank you.
Andy?
Okay, so here, I'm going to ask the fun question again. Given you're a parent, what are your thoughts on the school calendar and things that we've addressed as a district in terms of days, hours, blizzard bags, vacations, and things like that? What are your thoughts on that, and how would you approach looking at calendars if you're a part of the board?
I feel like when you're a part of the board, whether you are or aren't, you kind of bring your personal opinion to the table. And so personally, I would say that I actually like the school calendar. I like starting late. I think it's nice to have that added time at the end of the summer with your family, especially knowing that from what I hear from my stepsons, half the people don't show up the first couple of days anyway, so if we were to start before the holiday, the attendance probably wouldn't be so great. But in terms of blizzard bags, my opinion on that is although I think it's great to keep the kids engaged during snow days, I also work with quite a few folks up north in the Meredith region, and they, most of those schools up there do do blizzard bags, and all I hear is how hard it is on the parents when they're trying to work with their kids during the day to get the homework done. And although they do appreciate getting the kids out a little earlier, a lot of the camps and stuff don't start until later in June, early July, so then again, I hear the complaints. So although that's not this community, I think I would be hesitant to implement something like that without getting a better feel for what our community would want or able to accommodate. The day count and, you know, hours, it's, you're not going to make everybody happy, is, I think, the bottom line. But overall, whatever the community feels they can accommodate, not everybody's home with those kids during the snow days, they might have a babysitter that also may not be able to do the work required. So thoughts on the calendar? I actually kind of like it.
We'll take the win tonight.
Yep. Maybe I'm the only parent, but I like it.
Not the only, but there's some that don't.
I still like it.
So my next question is, what would you like to see changed in our school district?
And, you know, maybe I'm just easy to please, I don't know. I don't feel like there's a lot that I would want to change. I do agree, again, with Jason, not so much piggyback, but I do think the biggest frustration that we have in our household is just that understanding of kind of what our kids are going through or why something is changing, the, you know, even implementation of the yes room, like, it's just one of those things that sometimes, you know, a notice might go home, but especially in either a split household or just in the chaos of having, you know, pre-teens and whatever, you don't always see the notice. So that, for me, the communication, that transparency of kind of what our kids are going through, and again, you're not going to make everybody happy, but everybody kind of absorbs that communication differently. What might work for me may not work for the next person, so it's kind of maybe the same message transmitted in various medium. So I would say that's the biggest piece of it.
Gotcha. My joke, the end of every school year is, I can't wait to see what happened the last 180 days when I get my kids' backpacks back, so.
Quite honestly, I mean, it's true.
It's like, it's like the black hole in there.
The abyss, yeah.
So, back to you.
So this is a question that we could, you could spend days answering, so I realize that it's kind of a quick piece, but what is your sense of the purpose of public schools in general? Why do we have them? Why do communities maintain them? Why is it important to you?
That could definitely be answered for days. Yeah, so, I mean, in summary, I guess I would say, you know, it's creating that solid foundation and kind of giving that same jumping point for all of the kids. Without having a public, you know, venue for education, then we're relying on the resources of individual homes. I mean, that's just putting kids at disadvantages, and so I'd say it's square one. I mean, that, to me, is one of the most important parts of having a public school system and maintaining a high-quality public school system. You know, some families prefer going, you know, private, and, you know, again, we can go on forever about that, but fundamentally, we want to provide an equal platform, I think, to all the kids in our community and give them the same opportunity.
Cindy?
Again, one way that, kind of back to the communication, I think you were starting to actually get into that a little bit when you were talking about what your experience is as a parent. What is one way you think that communication might be able to be improved within our school district, if you?
Yeah, you know what's funny? I actually joked about this with my husband, because Team Snap is something that we always, you know, had utilized for soccer and other sports, and it's great, because you're kind of always getting the, it's almost like the messaging and text messaging of interaction with your coach or any changes. So my thought was always, you know, why can't Power School offer that same type of tool where instead of notices always going home and not sure if it's making it to this house or that house, or never seeing it because it's in the abyss of a bag? And people aren't always going to go to a website or, you know, actively seek something, they'll just complain that they didn't hear it after the fact. So having something that's pushing information at them, particularly if they're a parent and coming out of the school system through Power School, it's something that everybody has to sign up for as part of registration at this point. Now, granted, I mean, I'm sure that there are folks that don't, won't have access to it based on economic means, but large majority are going to see and get those messages if they came through, perhaps, something like Power School. I don't honestly know if that's functionality available through that platform, but I'm thinking more of a, you know, tech-savvy, kind of pushing messages at people, they might actually get it.
I use Team Snap, too. It's a lot of the sports for my kids, so I really do like it, so I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Andy?
Okay, I'm going to ask you the unfun question, and to give the pain and the fun to everybody. Do you have a viewpoint of the relationship between the town council and the school board, and how it could be improved if there's any issues, if things that are working, sort of your perception there?
You know, I'm going to be, again, completely honest, even though it's probably to my detriment, but I'm not as familiar with the relationship between the two. I definitely, I will honestly say I was enlightened by Jason's interview, and so that's going to be my answer, is I really don't know. I'm not going to lie.
And I will ask the question that I did before, because I think it got hit on anyway, and does, do you believe that chatter on social media is a legitimate source for information to assist you in your role on the school board?
No. I think it's good to hear it, because I think that sometimes those grumblings are the underlying, you know, the fuel of the fire kind of thing, and there's probably a lot of truth to it, but I don't think that you should live by it, necessarily act strictly on it, because I feel like sometimes that mode of communication doesn't always have all the information. So I don't know that you should take it at face value. I think, hear it, kind of catalog it, keep it in the back pocket when you're making decisions and evaluating facts, but I don't know that I would let it drive my decision if I came to the table.
Thank you. Doing the sweep, done, done. Andy, done? And that was my last question on my sheet, too.
Okay, great.
So with that, it's on to your turn to ask any questions that you may have, and then a closing statement.
Okay, great. So Cindy actually answered or provided information on one of my questions, because I did see in the board minutes that the initial thought originally was that this candidate would kind of assume Mr. Thompson's committee efforts. So my question was going to be really what that commitment looked like, because although I do have a lot of flexibility, there is the four kids at home, so I don't ever want to invest myself into something I can't commit to. So I guess my question is more of, you know, in general, not even specifically to what Mr. Thompson's commitments were, but what do you think your per-week or per-month hour investment is? And that would obviously include, you know, briefing materials in advance and all of that stuff.
Got you. Board meetings, obviously, are, you know, the week leading in, we get the schedule usually Wednesday to Thursday. Packets will come by email Thursday to Friday. You have the weekend for the meeting on Monday. So prepping is probably, you know, say, three hours for a meeting. If there's content-heavy, if it's minutes and we remember being there, it's quick, and if there's, you know, a lot of more presentation-driven, like, we just had some of our schools come, so there wasn't a lot of advanced information, it was just taking it all inorganically, so that can, you know, weigh into it as well. But I would say as a new board member, because I do new board member orientations all the time for the NHSBA, and that is, there's a little more prep on the front load, because there's a lot of what you obviously have never experienced. So things like understanding, you know, what RSAs are going to be impacted by certain agenda items when it comes to budgeting. If you've never done budgeting with our school district, it's a unique process, making sure that you're prepared to do that and participate. So when events come up, you know, agendas come up, being able to prepare for those agendas, and, you know, I know when I first came on the board, I spent time with my board chair and with the superintendent, just kind of going over what I need to know to be effective. So it's a little more upfront. When you do one budget, you can do another, so that orientation's over. But as you're ramping up, there's definitely some things that I would say you spend more time on than just reviewing the packet, but then it comes a little more fluidly. I'd say with committee assignments, it depends on the committee when you do negotiations. It's a deep dive.
I can imagine.
Yes, so, I assure you. So there's a lot of time offline, there's a lot of time in negotiations themselves. You do something like Parks and Rec, if there's any actionable items you have to take back to the board, supports that are needed. I'm on a Greater Wood Subcommittee, because we have 50 acres, the best 50 acres to get into the property are at the middle school, and we own it, so we have a seat at the table, and there's a lot of action items that come from that, and sometimes I'm doing weekend trail development and bridge building, so it could be anything. But it depends on those roles that you have. There's definitely some, I'd say each board member has at least one during the school day assignment, and so sometimes two, but for the most part, there's usually one to two, and then mostly evenings, say, once a month.
Okay.
So for each assignment. I think that's fair. Yes?
And they vary, too. I mean, there's some evening assignments that happen a couple times a year, or a few times a year. There's others that happen once a month, there's others that happen every other week. So what we try to do is, is sort of balance them across. So, as we said when Jason came up, is there are these default ones that you, that the candidate would pick up that Michael had, but we always can do sort of baseball card swapping, you know, off to the side, whatever makes sense. But as Shannon also said, once you sort of make that change, then we try to stick with it, so there's continuity, so that the same person comes to multiple, you know, meetings so that you can carry that continuity through. So, I mean, it's not a hard and fast rule, but we do flexible, and then we try to stick with it after that, so.
Makes sense. So it kind of sounds like what I expected, but I figured I would at least ask the question to make sure.
Excellent. So did you have something to add?
Yeah, I would just add to it, like, for example, it does kind of ebb and flow, it's not always consistent. So like during budget season, and that's a huge part of our responsibility, during that budget season timeframe from, let's say, December through even March is a little more meeting-heavy as we kind of dig into the budget and that kind of thing. So, and also, like what Shannon said with the contracts, you know, if you're on a contract committee, then you're going to, you know, you would get hit hard during that timeframe as far as the time commitment, but like, this last week was graduations, we were graduation on Saturday. this last week was graduations. We were graduation on Saturday and then we had a school board meeting Monday night. So that was seven until about 11:00. And then there might be a special meeting here and there, sometimes like what we have tonight. Or sometimes there's a joint meeting with town council or there could be a variety of things that, and some things that it's just a good idea to go to. So for example, Shannon and I both went to a meeting, we're not on a committee for it, but because it was a highway about the expansion. Because the expansion is going to impact the high school, we wanted to go and hear what the state had to say about it and what maybe that impact might be. So I would say it's pretty much like that. I, I don't know if I would say 10 hours a week-ish, you know, generally speaking, if I had to.
I guess, on average, yeah. And I would say the one thing is plan another 15 to 20 minutes in your grocery shopping schedule if you shop locally. Because you never know.
That's good to know.
There you go.
That's good to know.
Market basket, a lot of stuff comes up.
Yeah, I usually shop at like, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night, so that's totally fine. Probably miss the big crowd.
Closing the house.
I usually do.
Excellent. So, did you have any other questions?
No, I didn't have any other questions. I think the only other, I guess, closing statement would be that, you know, I'm hoping that maybe I can bring a different skill set to the table and I'm just looking to get myself involved. So I just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Nicole. And, and you're five minutes early, but you had the time if you wanted it. And so we'll bring up to the table Brandy Nunes. And welcome, Brandy. So again, we're going to start with, you have an opportunity to introduce yourself, give an overview and your background, and then we'll start the questions.
Okay, sounds good. First, thank you guys so much. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm Brandy Nunes. I've been in Merrimack for 13 years. I have three sons and they keep me very busy. They are in current grades, our fifth grade, fourth grade and kindergarten. Unfortunately, we were not able to enjoy the full day. Got out of kindergarten too soon, but. And I, I'm currently a sales and marketing consultant. I went to Northeastern University and I received a degree in communications with a concentration in human resources as well as marketing. I started off my career in California and I wound up getting married, bought the house in Merrimack and having my first son, all within a three-month window. So it was a very busy timeframe and while I thought I was going to go on to a career that was very, projected very nicely, when my son was born, I decided this isn't for me and I became beyond passionate about children and education. My son, my oldest, started developing some symptoms of a neuro issue of some sort and he has nystagmus and that sort of launched me into a different understanding of what education would be like for a child who has any form of disability. So I found it very interesting that I wound up purchasing a home before even knowing about how strong Merrimack is in any of their special ed. Brennan luckily has not had any challenges to his abilities to process any information, but he does due to the nystagmus, which for anybody that's not aware, it's the involuntary shaking of his eyes and it's a neuro issue, not an eye issue. So it's, it's not anything that affects, it affects his vision without it affecting, affecting his actual eye lenses. So that's been an interesting challenge because I've had to, as a parent, sort of walk through the path of exposure to Title I and what that means and understanding the what, how important that is to our system and how beneficial it's been, not only for my firstborn, but also my second son who, while he does not have any challenges in, in that, he definitely struggled with reading and enjoyed the resources of Title I. After sort of taking a break with having children, I really went full thrust into my career again and then the downturn of the economy came and I decided, you know, let's just sort of take a break and be a consultant. That's great and I absolutely love being a consultant, but my, my true genuine passion comes from being able to help children. So I have been a coach in the NYA system for several seasons. My husband is going on his ninth season as a travel coach and I last year decided to get involved and join the budget committee. So I was fully entrenched in the prep last budget season for the upcoming year and that was extremely eye-opening and very beneficial to understand, at least get my toes in the water relative to serving on that type of a committee and understanding more of what the board goes through and what challenges face us as we try and create a, a budget that meets all of our needs. So I think that kind of covers me until now.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And I will go around the table and Naomi's already punting. Okay.
So first of all, thank you for your service on the budget committee. And along that line, if you could tell me a little bit about, you said it was eye-opening. If you could tell me a little bit about what was so eye-opening about it and what you learned or if there were any, you know, real surprises or just what you took away from that after you just, you completed this was your, was it your first year?
It was, yes. So it was very eye-opening. I think as a parent, you have one set of lenses and obviously we all want what's best for our children and that's where our first, I think, thought process, you know, lies with your nucleus. But when you branch out and you really look at a school body as a whole and children as a whole, and you walk into our schools and you see some of the things that are on a budget item line and you're, I think I was really taken aback by one of our schools has a sink that needed repair and it, it sort of struck me as why, why would this, why wouldn't we have fixed this, you know, X amount of years ago when it first became a challenge or how can we create an environment where we don't kick a can farther down the line, but rather address, be proactive in our approach to, to certain things, not to say that the existing budget or previous budgets were focused on kicking a can. That's not really where I'm, I'm trying to go with it, but more how, is there a way to create a system where instead of kicking a can, we can get to the point where we can be more proactive and not delay repairs that are needed? That was in a preschool room and that's their first introduction to our school. And while probably for a child might not have made that big of an impact in their day-to-day, as a parent who's going in there and having conferences with the teachers, and I would notice that, I would wonder why are we not remedying that challenge when it's falling, the, the the sink closure was not able to slide correctly. So things along those lines really sort of hit me as what can we globally do to improve our schools and what can we globally do to ensure that we can at least try to get to the point of being more proactive in our approach as opposed to reactive where necessary and obviously understanding that it's a budget and everybody has got their needs and, and certainly the public has their own questions, comments and concerns, but trying to navigate that path as close to proactive as possible.
Andy?
So as part of the budget committee, you were presented with the article and the discussion around the, addressing the SAU sped building. What are your thoughts about the action that the board has taken so far and sort of how do you see it moving forward as we go through discussions to, to address this issue?
So I was initially struggling with this one as part of the budget committee, as I'm sure both of you will remember. My concern for the purchase when we were discussing it was what will happen when it's purchased, right? So now we've got it. And do we approve the purchase so we can patch and fix? Or do we approve the purchase so we can actually provide our administration with a sound building that can not be a short-term solution, but rather a long-term solution? And my biggest concern with the purchase was that we would patch and fix. That being said, Naomi was very kind in her thoughts that we, and right in saying it, that we can't even have that opportunity if we don't actually purchase it. So, and that's a valid point. And so when she said that, I wound up changing my vote towards making that purchase with the true desire that we would tear it down, if I'm being very honest, and build something new because I, I truly don't want a short-term solution. I would like to see us invest in our schools, in our administration and in that building and create a, a long-term facility that would work for multiple purposes. But certainly would, you know, be something to be proud of as well. I, I think that's, you know, we're a great town and we have a lot to be proud of in our schools and you wouldn't really know it based on, on the existing buildings that are there.
Okay. So I'm asking the same questions, my style versus others, but everyone's got their own. It's, they're all completely correct. So what do you feel is the school board's goal to deliver a public education?
I feel very strongly that school needs to be a safe environment and it's, our children are eventually going to take care of all of us. Our children are the foundation that eventually we will be passing on into this world. And to invest in our children's future, we have to first provide them with a strong foundation from an educational perspective, from a family perspective and from a safety perspective. I don't believe that any child should walk into a school and be afraid for any reason, from a bullying perspective, from a tragic perspective that we've seen way too much in today's day and age. And I think that from a public school system, the biggest thing that I would like all schools to be able to provide their students with is a quality education in a safe environment where they feel that no matter what else is going on in their world, whether it's at home or in a grocery store, on a playground, when they're at school, they can learn in a safe environment.
Thank you. Naomi, are we taking this one? Okay.
So you used the phrase quality education, which gives me a nice chance to hop a little bit further away from budgets and such, which you've given us wonderful, you've been involved in and gave us great information. Can you tell me what you mean by quality education?
I can. And it's not really, I'm not able to pinpoint it because I believe that quality education, and I'm not trying to skirt around it, but I really feel that quality education is truly different for every child. And for me, quality education is when a teacher can actually reach their student. And every student needs to be reached in a different way based on their learning needs, based on their learning process, based on their abilities or disabilities. And so for me, quality education is really when you can reach a child and, and reinforce whatever needs to be taught in that child's world in a way that they can understand it. That to me is quality.
Cindy?
Can you tell me a little bit about if you were to be on the school board, what you might find to be the most challenging for you personally?
I, I think it would be the initial learning. I, I don't think that being a part of the school board would be necessarily challenging for me. I would take it as a, a great opportunity that I would truly embrace. But I think the learning curve, I, I think there's, there's so much that has to happen on the board and within each, we have a lot of schools and we have a lot of students enrolled in our schools and there's a lot to absorb. And I think the biggest challenge for me would be just trying to absorb it all. I, I kind of like to dive into the data, into the knowledge, into the understanding, so I can be effective that much faster. So for me, it would be really the heavy lifting, maybe that I would even pose on myself more than you guys would pose on me, assuming I was able to, to take on the role. It would just be trying to absorb as much as I can, as fast as I can.
Andy?
What do you think the most important issue facing the school district is today?
Safety. I think it's facing everybody. I, I think that, you know, when I was going to school, I, to be very honest, I, in a million years, would never have thought that anybody could even have the ability to have a mass shooting in a school environment. It never would have even crossed my mind and yet now my children are exposed to lockdowns. They're exposed to, Reed's had one year, a situation where there was some fireworks going off and there were, well, they assumed, they had to assume the worst. And so I happened to be picking up my children at the exact same time that it was happening and I got locked into the gym and I was actually able to see and witness the process that occurs when we have a lockdown that is a legit scenario. And it's scary. It was scary for me. It was scary for the kids. I, I couldn't believe how well the administration handled it. The police presence was on, I mean, they, they handled it with ease. At least that's the way it appeared, which I'm sure to them it wasn't easy at all or it, it was, but it was systematic and they knew exactly what to do and how to do it. But it really gave me an insight into, this is a reality that all of our children have to face, that all of our educators have to face, that you as a school board have to face. The administration needs to work super close with all facets of our town because we're all affected by it. So as far as I'm concerned, it's not necessarily a budget issue. It's not a education and, and numbers and how do we improve our stats and how do we beat surrounding towns in what NICH says or School Digger says. For me, it's how can we ensure that all of our students get that quality education where they're being reached in an environment where they feel safe at all times?
Okay. It is my turn. Okay. So what would you do if a constituent or parent came to you with a concern?
So I've heard you ask, obviously, that a few times and every time I, I go back and forth. If I'm very honest, I would have to say that my desire, so I'm a, I'm a helper and that's just my nature. Like I'm the one that wants to just give all the kids hugs, whether they're mine or not. If I hear a baby crying, I'm like, come here. So when I hear somebody's having a challenge, especially in one of our schools, my initial desire is to keep them at ease and just say, you know, it's a valid concern, validate where they're coming from. But I also feel that it's not the school board's responsibilities to absorb all of our challenges that are presented, that it's, it really depends on where the problem lies. So if it is a school board issue, obviously, you know, bring it to the school board's attention. If it's more of an administrative area that needs to be handled within, like for a teacher or even a behavior specialist, I might recommend that they first speak with them before bringing it to the board and certainly can share with you, hey, I had a parent conversation. But I suggested that perhaps maybe, you know, if it was a Reed situation, that Mrs. Hoppa is her point of contact or, or the parent's point of contact, or if necessary, please bring in Mrs. Yarlot because they have a pulse of what's going on in their school before I feel that the board necessarily needs to get involved. If it's a board issue, certainly I would, I would bring it to the board, but I think if it's more on a lower level, I feel like I might say, would you mind if I share it with the board, but really my, my advice to you would be to please make sure that your teacher, the behavior specialist, as well as the assistant principal. specialist, as well as the assistant principal and principal of your school are well-versed in the situation.
Thank you. Back to, okay, so, over to Cindy.
And then again, as it relates to other committee work, are you able to take it on? Would you be able to take on other committees and the time commitment? You've probably heard of me go through it all.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mentioned that I'm a sales and marketing consultant. I work from home, so the majority of my time, I'm actually more a full-time mom than I am the consultant side of me, but absolutely.
Andy?
Fun question time. School calendar. What are your thoughts about it in terms of hours, days, blizzard bag, things like that? And how, and others touched on it, is how would you respond to people that don't agree with your point of view and things like that? Because it's a very, it's a passionate, I was thinking flashpoint, but yeah, passionate issue, so.
So, I, be very honest, this is one area where I don't feel I'm educated enough to make a decision, to be honest with you. I don't know, I personally love the calendar. I do, I totally agree with her. And the reason why I prefer it is, we, living in New Hampshire, we never know exactly when we're going to get out of school, in June. We just don't. So, I, as a parent, depend on all of July and all of August with my children. It's my reconnective time, and it's, for me, it's my family time, so it means a lot to me to be able to have at least two solid months where I feel like that would really shift and change, and certainly, we can all adapt to whatever the school calendar is. I mean, it is what it is. But I personally like having all of July and all of August off. As far as hours, you know, blizzard bags, I don't, I'm not educated enough to come from, to answer that feeling confident. So, I think I would like to learn more about those options, and why we, as a board, have decided not to do certain options, or to choose, you know, what we've chosen. I'm open, I guess, I'm very flexible with that, and I don't necessarily have an opinion until I'm educated more.
Okay. And my next question is, what would you like to see changed in our school district?
Outside of additional safety precautions, I really, similar to previous answers, I really think that communication is essential. And I think that being able to reach everybody in a similar fashion to, if there's a problem, we take all the measures to make sure that those areas are communicated. I'm on, I volunteer at JMU's, and one of our biggest challenges is our communication to the students, because teachers want to encourage independence with the children, so they'll put flyers, like, on the front, and they'll say, you know, "Grab one on your way out." And some kids do, some kids don't. And so, your communication is really left up to the child to either take or not take. And so, as a parent, I struggle because I don't necessarily know exactly what's happening and when, unless I'm literally fumbling through papers, or I'm emailing my teacher. I just wish that there was a systematic approach that was from kindergarten all the way through high school, so that way, parents were fully informed as to what was going on. I do think that that is one area of weakness that our school district has, and that would be second, I think, to my safety desires.
Okay. So, are you good, Naomi? Okay, then, Cindy?
I think that answers my communication question, so.
There you go.
Pass. Okay, now the hard question. What's your view of the relationship between the town council and the school board, and what changes would you like to see?
I think with anything, it's, when we stop learning and growing, we start the dying process in any relationship. And for me, I think that the collaborative approach to everything, the over-communicating as opposed to under-communicating, the, that we're in it as a team, reinforcement of that, I think, is key to any partnering that we have as a town. And so, that would be, you know, I think, really, the only, the only area, I think that it's, everybody has an agenda to some degree, and everybody has an opinion, and everybody has a desire to improve, and we might not necessarily agree on the path to get there, but I do think that being as open-minded and as kind and friendly in our approach to getting there is essential.
Okay. So, my last question is, do you believe chatter on social media is a legitimate source for information to assist you in your role on the school board?
I almost would shy away more than I think I would engage from the standpoint of, I believe firmly that if somebody has a legitimate concern about our school structure, our school environment, anything school-related, that there are proper channels to navigate through. And I am not, I don't believe that Merrimack Forum is the proper avenue to get there. Certainly is one option, but there are many other ones that I think might help a constructive conversation. Yeah.
I turned off my own mic, I'm my own worst moderator. So, that was my last question. Naomi, are you still good? Cindy, still good? Andy is good? And I am good. So, it's your turn. So, you get to ask questions of us and make your closing statement.
I don't actually have any questions. I apologize if I'm supposed to.
You don't? No. It's, if the dialogue created questions for you, that's what it was there for.
Okay, excellent. No, I really don't, I'm just extremely thankful for this opportunity, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. So, now we're into the second portion, which is item number 2.5, kind of. So, it's part of the interviewing process, which is a selection process. So, at this point, as a board, we'll discuss the candidate's qualifications, review the benefits of the candidate that we bring forward, and at the conclusion of deliberations, we'll vote. Motion second for a specific candidate, vote on that specific candidate. The candidate selected by the majority vote will be sworn in at the conclusion of the vote. Pat Heimrich, our school district clerk, is scheduled, is actually here in knitting, doing very well, crocheting, I think, she's more of a crocheter. Still jealous, I don't have that talent. And then, we'll have that new board member sworn in tonight if a majority has been selected a candidate. So, with that, we'll be able to establish an email address and start getting communications feeding right in. So, that's the idea. So, based on that, is there any feedback we want, based on the discussions that we've had? Cindy?
I mean, I just want to say first, before we go into individual candidates, specific feedback, I want to make sure that we thank each and every one of them for coming out tonight. And I am extremely excited in all three candidates and what they could potentially bring to the table, because I, there's something so exciting to me about people that want to get involved in the community, people that have a stake in the game, too. And I really admire all of you for putting your name in the hat and coming out and speaking to us today.
Absolutely. Now, I would just follow on to that, that there's, I believe, are there any openings on our bug comm right now? I'm looking at the school district clerk, we don't right now. But when those things come up, it's always a great opportunity to get involved. And then, there's also volunteerism in the schools, I think I talked a couple of meetings ago, about how the district parent groups are dying for hands at the table. It doesn't have to be year-round, but it definitely has to be, you know, they need whatever help that can be provided. So, there's always opportunity to engage in our district, and there's never a shortage of welcoming opportunities. So, on that note, and we do thank you for that. And Andy, did you have something as well? I thought your hand was about to go up.
Yeah, I was just going to sort of follow on. This is, it's a hard thing to do for you guys, to put your names in, to go into a position that is new to you, to go in front of a group of people. You're going to be watched by God, and everybody else wants his recording hits, and me being, having been involved for a while, I just don't watch it because I critique myself to the end. But it's also hard for us, too, because we're, when you have people that want to get involved, it's hard to say no, or to pick somebody else over the other. And it's hard, I don't know if you've ever interviewed somebody for your job or whatever, but what we're going to go through now to talk about candidates and pick one when everybody's sitting in the room is very unnatural to do, having done this.
But RSA-driven.
But it's RSA-driven, it is, I'll agree, but most of us have jobs that have interviewed people before. So, I want to make sure that, no matter how this goes at the end, we really want you to get involved, if not in the school board, in other things through the time, because we really need it. Because I got involved, I mean, I've lived in Merrimack, just as a history, I've lived in Merrimack for 50 years, and been through the schools, and raised my kids, and been through, but I didn't get involved in politics until, or in town politics until 2005, I think it was, because for me, it was the right time. So, I was a newbie when there, I didn't know how anything worked, and slowly grew into it. And that's how you do it, you get involved, throw your hat, a little bit of caution to the wind, you know, and go from there, so.
So, thanks. So, with that, are there any comments or considerations from the board? Seeing none, are there any nominations for any specific candidates? I feel like it's that, to tell the truth, we're all supposed to stand up at some point. So, it's a little weird. So, Naomi?
I'll nominate Jason Bradsky, please.
Okay. Is there a second? Second, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, all three individuals tonight had marvelous things to say, and I can only second what was said about each of them bringing something unique. But I was very impressed with the background that Jason had put together on the issues, and the time he's already put in to familiarize himself with what we're doing, what the town is doing.
Thank you. So, anyone else who wants to speak to the motion? Andy?
So, I second it, because I think that we need to discuss everything that comes up here. And as Jason mentioned in what he sent to us as an intro, he did, he was on the ballot during, in the last election, and didn't receive sufficient votes to win. And it's, and it takes a lot to put your name out there to do this. You know, so, so there's that, his willing to be involved, willingness to be involved, willingness to go through. I think that our challenge that we have today is the three candidates are in front of us to make the decision on who we think is the right one, because what we're asking them to do is come in and step in for the remainder of this year. And then, sometimes, the terms don't line up, so that then, there's some election at the end that would be for one year or two years. In this case, Mike Thompson's term is up at the end of this period.
Correct, 2019.
So, this would allow, whatever person we bring in would serve his, and then, would then make a decision on their own to whether they want to re-up or not, and put their name on the ballot and stuff. So, you know, I think that that's, that's an important part of this in terms of how we make a decision here, and, you know, so from a Jason's perspective, the benefit he's got is he's sort of put his name out there and gone through the, I'll use the word agony of defeat, but it's not really agony, it's sort of that process, so, anyway.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, or three, so the motion fails 1-3-0. Is there another nomination to come before the table? Cindy?
I was going to nominate Brandy Nunes for the board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yeah, so this is the hard part. So, listening to all three candidates, I'd love to have each one of them sitting on the board. If we could extend the board to be 11 people, or whatever the number is, I want all three. But for me, the tipping point is Brandy's understanding of the budget is certainly extremely helpful. It's not a win-loss, but her getting involved, her understanding, the sausage that we make every year in terms of budgeting was.
I never liked that term.
Well, I use it, I'm sorry. Anyway, is really an important piece. Her, the logic that she used on some of the budget things, I was able to listen to a few of the budget meetings, was, I thought was really good, really insightful. But the other piece of it is, is that she's, in her discussion, she certainly brought a breadth of different aspects of, you know, her children in terms of the ones that didn't have challenges, the ones that did have challenges, understanding the differentiation that we all face in terms of the kind of students that we have to bring through the school system, and what challenges we get put in front of us as a board. So, in my view of the three candidates we talked to tonight, I would be most comfortable, and would like to see, of the three, Brandy as somebody that would be on the board, to finish Mike's term, so.
Thank you, Andy. Is there, Cindy?
I would also like to see Brandy on the board for similar reasons to what Andy had said, and I think a big one being that the year that she had served on the budget committee, that this, she had said this has been an ongoing interest to her. And I feel, just because it was my own experience that I did the budget committee, and I know how well that that prepared me for this role. And I learned so much in that year that it really made for a smoother transition for me, and there were oftentimes, particularly during my first year on the school board, where I thought, "I'm really glad I did that," because it really did prepare me for a big chunk of our responsibilities. And it also, it also gave me exposure to the various schools, so even above and beyond the actual budget committee, even though it was part of the budget committee roles, on the budget committee during the process, as you all know, the budget committee will go to, representatives will go to the various administration, will go to the high school, will go onsite and get a tour technically of all the buildings. And I think just that soft introduction, you know, really is helpful. I really liked her areas of interest around the communications. So, as you know, that's been a really important issue for me on the board. So, that really appealed to me as far as something that it would be a benefit, as well as her concerns over safety. So, I just felt that I really related to those things, and felt that she would provide a lot of value as we look to fill this vacancy through the next election cycle.
Yeah. And I would echo, coming off of what you're saying about communications, and I'm going to go back to Naomi's appointment, and what she brought to the table was something we needed. And that was her PhD in education, she was a ringer. She was one that could give us an insight that we didn't have. And having a communications consulting function as her professional life, I think, offers, lends us a hand, and where we can take our communications going forward. With that, I definitely support that nomination for that reason. The budget committee cycle, I was on planning and building, so I never got to be on the budget committee in my career, but I was married to someone on the budget committee, which is why we didn't, because there would have been too much barns for any room to handle. But on that note also, we just didn't want to conflict with, because as Mrs. Heimrich knows back there, my husband and I didn't necessarily even agree on how the budget was going to be run. So, we probably would have strangled each other on camera, and it would have been awkward. So, it would have been great TV, it probably would have made, you know, been all the rage. But on that note, so, it really was the communications piece, we need that tool right now. And that was what really sparked my interest. I think you all had wonderful answers, and you all have great qualities, and the school district needs them. And I definitely see that there's a great opportunity for service to the district in what you bring to the table, and we'll be looking for that. But I do support that nomination for that reason. So, is there any other comments before the board on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of putting forth Brandy Nunes, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, the motion carries 4-0-0. Brandy, congratulations, thank you, Nicole, and thank you as well. Jason, yes. Of course you can.
One thing I wanted to say was, as it relates to Nicole, I could see that also some of the value that she would bring, and I really encourage, and Jason as well, where they both have some solid working experience that would benefit. I mean, there's no question that the CPA, you know, would be of great value as it relates to the budget and everything else. So, what I would ask is to continue to get involved, please. And I know a vacancy would open up on the budget committee, which again, would be.
Like five minutes, you have an opening on the budget committee?
I'm doing the, for one of you to be able to do that, to learn more, and I think with Jason, too, some of his day-to-day experiences would be of great value. So, the other thing, Nicole, having a child in every school, you know, that's huge, because I feel like as time has gone on, and my kids have gone through each different schools, I've become that much more valuable to the school board, because all of a sudden, I'm seeing things I wasn't exposed to. and I'm hearing from different parents that's, and so you're getting it, you know, you can get it from all over. So please, you know, um, please continue to get involved, um, Jason and Nicole. And really appreciate you putting yourself out there.
I do want to say that.
You want to come?
I'm actually happy that I was not selected, but don't feel bad.
Thanks.
And, and in sincerity, because I, I always like to stretch myself and try to jump into something new, but it's one of those where, um, hearing you speak and they are, they're better for this role right now. Doesn't mean I won't be back later or, you know, revisit this, but I have more work to do. So now is not the right time for me. So I totally appreciate.
Thank you. So, um, Mrs. Heimrich, it's time to show us what you crochet. And if you could, uh, swear in, um, in your sweater, yes. So, um, our newest member, um, we're just gonna go on with the, um, the next agenda item. And we will have you seated at our table, starting at our July 16th meeting. We look forward to having you there. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you all. So we're on to item number four, which is consent agenda. So I will, uh, we have two, two items, which is the approval of advanced coursework, advanced placement courses policy, and the dual and concurrent enrollment agreement between the community college system of New Hampshire and Merrimack School District. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Andy, uh, second, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 4-0-0. Motion to adjourn, made by Cindy, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 4-0-0. Thank you and good night.